I'm going to call to order this meeting of Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, March 2nd, and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Giffens.
Good morning. There's a reason I'm wearing blue and yellow today. And as we get ready to read this, I'd like to acknowledge what's going on in the Ukraine and to state that I am in solidarity with the people there. And I imagine that my colleagues are as well. So we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. I will note for the record that all three members of the Board of Commissioners are present today. And we move on to our department updates and we have Ms. Cottle here. Good morning.
Good morning. Today, I just want to share a few things about some changes in terms of metrics and what we're looking at. This week, the two metric score on our Indiana map will fall into yellow and just missed blue by a tiny margin. So we kind of did that last week as well, just barely missed it. Remember that the advisory map will not move to yellow because of that two-week requirement before those change colors. But also remember that the sharp declines of our current situation make that measure less relevant than it was when we had lots of roller coaster numbers. This week, our cases per hundred thousand fell below 100 and into double digits. So excellent news. The positivity rate fell to just under 6%. And it's continuing each day to go down. Overall trends for hospitalization, symptomatic testing, water sampling data, all continue to indicate declines. Our rolling daily average of cases is now around 20. And the last time we saw that number was in October. So if my little book of numbers, it looks like when I went back that October was the last time that number was in the 20s. So it's been a while. This past week has had lots of changes. Now, so far, overall, that may come mid-month. We're waiting to hear more about that. But the CDC did change school bus requirements and make that more of a local decision based on local numbers and circumstances. So that was a more recent change. With the shift in the pandemic phase, the CDC has also changed metrics used to determine disease burden and recommended mitigation measures for counties. The updated CDC guidance looks at the number of new cases, which they did before, but it groups them in less than 200 cases per hundred thousand or 200 or more cases per hundred thousand in the past week, based on provider reporting. The CDC also recommends including hospital data, so new COVID patients who are admitted and their bed capacity, along with other things that we would be looking at, right? All the things that we have been looking at, reports, maybe from schools, from our water sampling, just various things that we're seeing. One thing that I think is very important, because I've already had some people comment or ask me about this, with the CDC, when you are looking at their levels, you're going to see that it says that we are high, but remember that data always has lag time. Always. We're always looking back to figure that out. The CDC data that's posted has a greater lag time than our state and local data. So we're looking back a week or two, and the CDC is then looking back a little bit further. So it's important when you look at those levels to keep that in mind. And the converse could be true. So it's going to take us a while. It's going to look worse a little while longer, right? Until it catches up. And if we were to take a turn for the worse in the future, we're going to look better on that CDC page than we really are currently until that catches up. So just keep that in mind. And one example that I want to give you, this week, looks like we should be right around 43 cases per hundred thousand. Excellent number. Last week, we were at 175, but February 16th, we were at 310 cases per hundred thousand. So you can see that the CDC is really looking more at that mid-February number, right? As opposed to just last week. They are updating on Thursdays their data. So again, it's not changed daily, it's changed weekly. So we'll continue to assess our local data, including our hospital data and all the other data sets that we have been, as we continue to make decisions about our community level. The recommendations for wearing masks when in indoor public places is when the community level is high. Of course, there are times and circumstances when individuals should be wearing a mask based on their own personal risk, regardless of the community level. As masks become more optional, it is important to remember that many people will choose to wear a mask for their own safety, for the safety of a family member or a friend, and some people will wear them simply for their own level of comfort. That's okay. Masks optional, but respect each other's choices in that and not assume that somebody is wearing a mask for, you know, let's just assume that they're wearing it because they're trying to protect somebody else. They have an underlying health condition. Let's give everybody the best of intentions. Testing does remain available, although state-funded sites are beginning to close. Coronavirus.gov is still your best place to find testing options. Your providers pharmacies still are options as well. The Gravity site here in Monroe County is open Monday through Wednesday and Friday, 8 to 4. They're open on Thursdays, 10 to 6. They're no longer open on the weekends. Our local vaccination rates could be higher. They are hovering around that 60% mark. Can't quite get them to go much higher than that at the moment. So please know vaccinations are available. And ourshot.in.gov will help you find the best vaccination site to meet your needs. And we will continue to provide updates through social media, our bi-weekly press conference, these meetings, and our webpage as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. Great to hear the good news. We hope it sticks. And next we'll hear, let's see if there's questions from Commissioner Giffens.
No, I was going to ask where people could go get tested and get vaccinated, and Ms. Cottle answered those questions.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm just glad that we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah. Again, we appreciate all of your help and your department and the board. And throughout all of this, it's been a couple of years now. And so this is really good news to have and we're hopeful for the future. All right. So any other departments have an update for us today? See any? So we do have a proclamation for today.
Yes. Whereas women of every age, race, class, sexual identity, sexual orientation, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of Monroe County in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every aspect of our community by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force.
Sorry. And women have been particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in Monroe County and across the nation. And women have served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, including the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all.
We want to honor and acknowledge the expanded role women are playing in all sectors and all levels of government by celebrating our first president and the nomination of a black woman to the U.S. Supreme Court. We rejoice in seeing women in these new positions as they serve as role models for all. And we recognize the work of Monroe County Women's Commission in its efforts to assist women's equity at the local level. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Women's History Month in Monroe County. So, and thank you, Commissioner Giffens, for that. We appreciate your work on that. All right. So next we have public comment. Public comment is reserved in this section of our agenda for items that are not on our agenda. The time limit is three minutes at 2 minutes and 30 seconds. You will hear a tone. And when you hear that tone, that means you have 30 seconds to complete your comments. I will also note that we would ask you for your name and whether or not you are a Monroe County resident. It appears we have commenters at the net email room. If they could please proceed.
Hello. My name is Leslie Green. I'm the CEO for Stone Belt Arc here in Bloomington, headquartered here in Bloomington. I am a Brown County resident, but I feel like I'm more, I last lived in Monroe County because this is where I spend most of my waking hours. I wanted to talk to you today and let you know, if you don't know at this point, that I will be retiring as of April 1st and leaving my position. I have been with Stone Belt for 42 years. I've been the CEO for half of those, for 21 years. In relation to women in leadership, Stone Belt has been led by women for all but 15 years of its existence, which is now over 60 years going. We also have 10 director positions, and nine of those are occupied by women. I think we've done really well. And we have people that are very, very dedicated to what we do. And even though the last two years have been some of the hardest of my time at Stone Belt, we persevere and we can carry on. And we hope that we are seeing the end of the kinds of issues that we've been dealing with. I wanted just to give you a quick overview of what Stone Belt does. For those of you who may not know in the listening audience, Stone Belt is an organization, as I said, headquarters in Monroe County. We do have locations in both Lawrence and Bartholomew County, but well over 75% of the work we do is here. In pre-COVID times, we serve about 1,300 people in a year. And we're getting back to that, although our numbers are a little bit down from that. And here in Monroe County, we have about 70 to 80 people that we support to live in their own homes, in their apartments throughout the community. We also have eight group homes that have five to seven residents who live in neighborhoods all through the community. We have employment programs that have well over 100, 150 people who are either looking for work, who are working, who need ongoing supports and training. So we're very, very committed and involved in that. We do operate a facility here in Bloomington. Oh, actually, we have two facilities, but the main one that your support offers too is our headquarters at 10th Street, where we have lifelong learning courses, both classroom and community experiences. We also have a work program there where we do about 5 million pieces a year for Cook Medical and Cook Urological. We have a variety of people that go out and do volunteer work in the community. So we are about hearing about Monroe County quite a bit. I said that when I first started at Stone Belt in 1979, it was kind of a place for people to come and be safe. Now I feel like Stone Belt is more of a launchpad, a place for people to come and learn what they need to know and to move on and do what it is they want to do in their lives. Some of them need little support from us ongoing. Some people need 24-hour, 7-day support, but we tailor our services to their need. So I just, I did want to thank you for the support that you have provided over the years. I know that our funding comes through the Commissioner's budget. Appreciate that you've included us every year. This has been going on since Charlotte was sitting in your role, Charlotte Zitlow. And so we've had a really good working relationship with the county in all these years. And I just wanted to add my personal thanks to you for all you've done to support Stone Belt in the many ways that you have. I also want to introduce my successor. For some of you, this may not, the introduction may not be necessary because Bette Dewise, who the Board has chosen to take the CEO role starting in April, has been with the organization for 31 years. She's led our employment efforts and has created what I think is one of the best employment programs, organizations like our kind in Indiana. And she has also been very, very involved as our chief operating officer for the past year and a half, two years. So she knows the organization well. The transition is going very well. She, I'm giving her the little bits of information that I might have in my role as CEO that she might not know, but it will be, she's very, very quick to learn those few things that she needs to and to help make sure that our organization carries on in a very, very successful way. So again, thank you. And I bet it has some comments to make as well.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Green. I'm so glad you're here. And we cannot thank you enough for all of your hard work. 1979, wow. That's amazing. Congratulations on your retirement. And congratulations, Ms. Dewise, from all of us, too.
Thank you very much. As Leslie said, I am Bette Dewise, and I am a Monroe County resident. And I'm so excited to be taking over the CEO role at Stone Belt as Leslie retires. It's some pretty big shoes to fill. As many of you know, she's been an incredible CEO for Stone Belt. I look very much forward, though, to being only the fourth CEO Stone Belt's had in our 62-year history. I do have a long history with Stone Belt. I'm passionate about the services we provide and the clients and families that we support. During my 31 years, I have been involved with every program that Stone Belt runs. So some more than others, employment obviously being where most of my experience has come from. So I too want to extend my thanks to the Commissioners for the funds that Stone Belt has received over the many years and your support of Stone Belt. I also want to take just a couple of minutes of my time to give you a little bit of information about where we are currently at Stone Belt and where we're headed. The pandemic has been an incredibly challenging two years for us, keeping clients and staff safe, figuring out how to navigate things, and right now figuring out how to sort of climb back into the services we used to offer, bring clients back that are still at home with their families and get support to a lot of our families. So that's been a very challenging time. Our number one issue is staffing. Finding staff, training staff, keeping staff. I know that's a community-wide issue and a nationwide issue, being able to fill the positions that we have. As I mentioned, I've been in employment for most of my career, and I've never seen it be this hard to hire staff. And we can be challenged to hire staff in the best of times. So we're working very hard on that. We're making progress. And we're trying to help people find careers at Stone Belt and recognize the great job that that can be and the rewards that come from helping somebody build a life that they want. And I also want to talk about some of our initiatives we're moving forward with that I'm really excited about. As we plan for the next couple of years, we've, we're really focusing particularly in Monroe County on changing our service model within our day services to be more of an employment-first focus. So within our facilities, Leslie mentioned, we have our work program where we do extensive work for Cook Medical. We're working in our other day programs to convert those to training programs that work on work skills. So what I call the soft skills of work, the skills that you need, no matter what job you're going to work in. So whether that's your social skills, your communication skills, your conflict resolution skills. And we can do that within the context of pretty much any activity somebody's participating in. So for example, if you're in an art program, you certainly can be producing art, but you can also work on getting along with others. So as we make that shift, our real goal is to help more and more of the clients we support find meaningful work or find meaningful activities that are based on what they want to do and what their career plan might be. So I just want to end with thanking you for your continued support and hope that I can be a resource to you as you may have disability issues come up in our community and that you know you can always reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, congratulations, Ms. Green, on your retirement. And congratulations, Ms. Dewise, on your new role. We appreciate your hard work, both in the past and the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's see if there's anyone on Zoom who has a comment to make. Please raise your hand on the screen. All right. Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of the minutes from February 23rd, 2022 memorandum of executive session of Board of Commissioners and County Council, February 22nd, 2022. But that's all.
Second. Yeah, thank you so much. We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, corrections? Okay. Mr. Copper, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes for February 23rd, 2022 and for the memorandum on the executive session from February 22nd, 2022?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of claims document accounts payable, March 2nd, 2022.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We have Mr. Miller here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning. The total for claims was $606,452.95. $153,133.26 was for wheel and certex distribution for December. $103,195.3 was for innkeeper's tax collection distribution for February. And $48,600 was for purchase of right-of-way parcels for the Fullerton Pike Phase 3, as well as numerous sheriff deputy wiper blades, oil changes, batteries, and lights, things of that sort.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I noticed there were like a couple of pages worth of fleet maintenance expenses.
That's why I felt the need to explain that, minimal amounts, but yeah, about four to five pages, I believe.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? If there is, please raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Seeing none, we'll come back for our votes. Mr. Copper, will you please call the roll on approval of the claims document accounts payable, March 2nd, 2022?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will note for the record that we have received a report from the Clerk of the Circuit Court for January of 2022. And we've also received the weights and measures report, which spans January 16th to February 15th, 2022. And with that, we will move on to new business.
I move approval of Automated Doors and Access, Inc., for election operations at 302 South Walnut Street in an amount of $5,945 and an amount to be determined, or a fund to be determined.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Crone joining us. Thank you so much. We've got a few items for you, but we'll start with this one.
Good morning, Commissioners. And for everyone that's listening, this is not deja vu. I know we've been hearing a lot about election operations at 302 South Walnut, but this is just another part of that. In order to improve accessibility for all at the location and to get us into compliance, we need to install two electric door openers on the front entry and exit doors, as well as one exterior ADA push-button actuator and one on the interior. And this is for automated door access, who we currently use to provide support and installation for our other applications and other buildings to get those implemented for us.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens? Commissioner Jones?
Just thank you for working so fast.
We're trying.
Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. All right. Seeing none. Mr. Copper, will you please call the roll on the Automated Doors and Access, Inc., agreement for election operations?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of Choose Premier Painting LLC for election operations, 302 South Walnut Street, in an amount of $9,850 and a fund to be determined.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Crone?
Yes. This is pretty straightforward. The location is obviously the old Napa building, which is now a faded denim color of blue. So we wish to repaint the exterior of the building in colors that go along with the color scheme that's in that downtown location. There would be a primary building color and then a trim accent color. Part of the work that'll have to be done is pressure washing of the mold and mildew that is on the exterior of the building. So that is to clean up the building and paint the entire exterior for us.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I was getting, my only question was what color are you going to be choosing, or colors, I guess?
Well, the clerk had requested muted colors. The areas around there are earth tones and grays. So we can, I was going to get paint samples and leave that for future discussion on what color we go with. The color we choose doesn't affect the price of the paint, so we just haven't made that determination yet.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm just very pleased that it'll be repainted. It will fit in quite a bit better, I think.
Yes.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Copper, will you please call the roll on the agreement with Choose Premier Painting LLC for election operations?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Move to approve Everywhere Signs for election operations at 302 South Walnut Street in an amount of $13,250, a fund to be determined.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Crone, again, please.
Yes. The front of the building currently is just exposed directly to the elements, and it was requested by the election board and the clerk for an awning to be provided there to protect the voters from the elements. This is a quote from Everywhere Signs here in Bloomington to install an awning that will run the full length of the front of the building and will extend out approximately seven feet from the front of the building, which actually will cover that front walk. I've already discussed with the city, and we have the green light from them. I've already discussed with the city and we have the green light from them if we choose to install that awning. Total for labor and the awning comes to $13,250.
You so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I had to read about what this kind of awning was. Is this going to be cloth or metal or?
This will be, this will be a canvas cloth awning that's over an aluminum frame that will be mounted to the front of the building. So consistent with what you see with a lot of the business fronts in any street here in our town.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I'm sure the voters will thank you for this.
I hope so.
Um, so is the color to be determined, I would assume, based on the building color?
Right now, tentatively, we've we've chosen a royal blue color. Again, the color won't affect. But with the colors that were in the area, that's just what we used to work the quote up. But we can change that if the color determination is made that that blue will not match with it.
Okay, and any lettering on that?
No, this is to keep, for time constraint, you're trying to get it put together. This doesn't have lettering, badging, anything on it, just plain novice.
Good, that makes sense. Thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen, please. All right, seeing none, Mr. Copper, will you please call the roll on the agreement with Everywhere Signs for election operations?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
And next item, please.
Move to approve Strouser Construction Company Inc. proposal for construction and remodel of election operations at 302 South Walnut Street in an amount of $42,845, a fund to be determined.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Mr. Crone.
Yes, so in order to facilitate, to make this work for election operations and also to meet ADA compliance codes due to the use of the building, some light construction or remodel is going to be required in that location. One item to be done will be the construction of a 12 by 20 ballot room. Additionally, we'll be adding a second ADA compliant bathroom, bringing the current bathroom that is there up to ADA compliance and the addition of a mechanical room, break room at the end of the office space that's located there. So Strouser Construction, Michael Chamberley had drawn up plans for us and Strouser Construction has agreed that they can meet the April 5th deadline to complete that construction. So this is a request to approve the proposal from Strouser.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I was amazed that they could agree to get this done by April the 5th. That was just, oh, wow.
He was very pleased, very pleased.
Commissioner Jones?
I agree with Commissioner Giffens.
Yeah, you did so well to find a contractor that can get this done. And and I'm assuming that all of these other elements are also slated to be done before that date as well?
Well, one of the things with the awning, since the outside of the building is going to have to be pressure washed and painted, we were going to hold off doing the awning until that work was completed, so we don't mess up an item, a pricey item. So I, weather is going to be a factor in how we get the building painted. They're going to go ahead and come in and clean it up for us. And but depending on how the weather does, will depend on how how quickly we can get the paint on. They are trying to get ahead of that April 5th schedule with the paint, but like I said, weather will determine. I have to attribute some of the success on how quickly we've been able to bring this together. The contractors I've reached out to and the public has been very responsive because of what this facility is going to be to try to accommodate us on this. So I really have to give tip my hat to everybody we're working with on trying to pull this together.
That is excellent, excellent news. Thank you again so much for organizing all of this, all of these components, all these spinning plates and not drop one. So good for you. Thank you for that. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You raise your hand in the Zoom screen. It looks like we have one commenter, Candace. If you could verify your name and let us know whether or not you're a Monroe County resident, please.
Hi, yeah, this is Candace and I am a Monroe County resident. I just had one question on all of these updates. Are they mainly just structural in terms of what was discussed, the awning, the, you know, additions, what you what you mentioned? Are there any elements that have anything to do with voting machines or anything like that? Or are these mainly building upgrades?
Thank you, Candace. These are all just building upgrades. We already have voting equipment in place.
Right, right. Yeah, I figured there's already voting equipment in place, but obviously I wasn't sure if any of the updates or upgrades had anything to do with anything else.
No, they don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any other public comment. And so with that, Mr. Copper, will you please call the roll on the agreement with Strouser Construction Company Inc. for construction and remodel of election operations?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you again, Mr. Crone. You've done great work. Appreciate it. Our next item is a OSHA 300 report on workers' compensation loss run. And we have Ms. Sensenstine here to tell us about it. And I don't know that we need a motion, Mr. Copper. Do we need a motion on this? Is this something we need to approve?
I think this is for your information only. I don't think it needs approved.
Thank you so much. Ms. Sensenstine, would you tell us all about it?
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. This is an annual report that I file. It's due today, but I filed it a few weeks ago. And the, so in the packet is the actual filing that I did and then the sort of a summary of the data that comes from IPEP, the folks who run our workers' compensation program. And yeah, happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, there's been a big jump in some of these claims over the last year, right? And do we know why that's happened?
I don't think that I, usually I talked to you, Penny, yesterday, and usually there is like a yearly comparison at the top. And that wasn't included for some reason on the report this year. But in 2018, there were 49 claims. 2019, there were 40. 2020, there were 36. And then in 2021, there were 44. I think it, I think that in 2020, the number went down because of COVID, but I think that that 44 number is the average. But I, there were four claims in 2021 that accounted for the majority of those costs and they were just a little bit more severe claims, if that makes sense. And so that's why those amounts were a little bit higher. I think our incidents are pretty consistent. You know, we still want them to be less, but I think that there are just some high claims in 2021.
Okay, thank you. I, it was actually the dollar amount, not the number.
Yeah, I think due to the nature of those injuries, they accumulated more costs.
But I hope I hope our workers then are completely healed.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Um, I have a quick question. What is the NOC designation on a number of the lines?
That's a good question. I'm not sure. Maybe.
I can answer that. That actually stands for not otherwise classified.
That's, that would've been my guess. Thanks, Jordan.
Thank you.
Teamwork.
Thank you. Yes, that makes sense. Not otherwise classified. Good. Thank you so much for that. All right.
Yeah, and those those classifications are set by IPEP. And so they, some of them are a little strange in comparison to the departments we actually have, like, yeah.
We don't really fit into their categories all the time. Yeah, got it. Excellent. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. All right, we don't see any. Thank you for that. And now we will move on to item F.
Move approval of proposed personnel policy handbook updates.
Second. And Ms. Sensenstine, would you tell us all about this?
Sure thing. This, we talked about this in the work session a couple of weeks ago. I sent it out to the prosecutor and the judges for their approval and they have approved. So now it just needs formal approval here at your Commissioners meeting.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I want to thank Ms. Sensenstine for putting all the recommended changes in red. It made it much, much easier and the strikeouts for those we were taking out. So no, it looked very thorough and and made it, I think, more consistent.
I cannot take credit for that. That was Lee Baker in the legal department has been working on this very diligently. So he, I think it helps him too to see them in red.
Excellent. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right, yes, it was great work and thank you, Mr. Baker, for your great work on this too. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand on the Zoom screen. All right, being none, Mr. Copper, will you please call the roll on the proposed personnel policy handbook updates?
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. We don't have any appointments today. I just have a few announcements. We have, we do stand in solidarity with the people of Ukraine and the terrible ordeal that they're facing. And as such, we have lit the courthouse in blue and yellow to show our solidarity with the people of Ukraine. So you could see that at night and think about the struggle that they're facing and they're really difficult time ahead. We do have office hours with members of the Board of Commissioners. There are six different opportunities each month. Just go on to the calendar at co.monroe.in.us and find the instances on the calendar and join the meeting. You'll be placed in the waiting room to begin with. And then you'll be brought in to have a one-on-one conversation with one of us. We're really happy to provide this service to our county residents. And it's your opportunity to offer comment or to ask questions of any of us. So we look forward to speaking with you. We do have some board and commission openings. Go to co.monroe.in.us to see the application form and you can fill that out and send that in. And we also continue to support the townships with the Township Assistance Fund, which is available to help those who are struggling to meet the basic necessities of life due to COVID. And if you do need assistance for things like rent and utility bills, please contact your township trustee. Every resident in the county lives in one of our townships, whether you live in the city, a town or neither. You can find that information in our minutes each week. It's on the emergency management page on our website and it's also available at, by calling 211 or going to in211.org. I will note as well that there are blood drives scheduled for March and for April. Tuesday, March 29th, 10 to 3. Wednesday, March 30th, 1 to 6. Monday, April 4th, 10 to 3. And Tuesday, April 5th, 1 to 6. All of these are at Ivy Tech. Big thank you to Ivy Tech for hosting. To make an appointment, go to redcross.org. And it appears that we will be returning to the NatU Hill Room for our meetings. And all of our boards and commissions and other entities will be returning to in-person meetings. So you can see that great shot of the NatU Hill Room with all of our technology setup. That's awesome. We appreciate and really are grateful for our technical services department, Mr. Evans and your whole team for getting us to this point where we're going to have meetings that are going to be both virtual and in person. And that means that when there's still infection in the community from COVID, we encourage you to attend meetings via Zoom. You will be able to provide comment and you can conveniently join from outside our facilities. This goes for all of our boards and commissions and all of our public meetings. Yes, we will be in person, but just to help continue to protect the public and keep our incident rate down, we do encourage you to attend virtually if that's convenient for you. If not, you're welcome to come back to our buildings, our facilities, the beautiful NatU Hill Room in the courthouse, for example. So see if my colleagues have anything else to offer.
I wanted to wish Kate Petroline the best of luck. I believe she's leaving this soon. She's been our Director of Emergency Management and one of the people that's put together these blood drives that have proven to be very, very beneficial to the local, local or to the region, actually. So she wanted to be closer to her family and we all understand that for sure.
Yeah, I think that's the pandemic's taught us that. And yes, I appreciate you raising this because you're right. She, her last day is Friday, isn't it? I kept thinking it was next week. It is Friday this week. Yes, thank you, Ms. Petroline, for all of your hard work for Monroe County residents. She was Assistant Director for quite some time under Allison Moore and and then was promoted to the role of Director. And she's just done an amazing job. And we're really happy for her and sad for us. This is what I told her in an email. But we will miss her and we appreciate her service. All right, with seeing nothing else, can we come back at 11:00 AM for our work session? It's in about 10 minutes? Looks like we have one item on that work session. Okay, excellent. Thanks you, thanks again, T S D. And with that, we're going to adjourn our regular meeting and we'll come back at 11:00 AM for a work session. Thanks, everyone.